In order.
And for.
Of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off with the consent agenda. I'll move to approve the consent agendas presented in a second area of motion in a second. On your own call.
Thank you.
All right.
Ma'am.
Hi.
Open.
All right. All right. Next up will be a public comment for all non-business and business items. If anybody has anything they want to say on any of our agendas tonight, please stand, come up to the podium and state your name and address. And then we'll go from there. I have a feeling there's a few of you.
I guess that would be.
You can come up to the podium.
Absolutely. Shannon Johnson, I live at eight oh one East Elm Street, and what I would like to address is proposed parking ban from Willow to Perry. Prayer statement, please bear with me. I'm actually speaking for several people in the room.
Perfect.
All right, we. Neighbor got together and we held a meeting to discuss this issue, and these are the cumulative areas of concern. Speed on the street first and foremost. We have no cars parked for drivers to jack you around, which forces them to yield to oncoming traffic, slow down, take turns. Perry will become even more of a drag strip than it currently is. And believe me, I've lived there six years. I watch it every day. I'm right on the corner of Perry now. Right in that dip, I've seen sparks fly. I've seen parts come off cars. They're moving so fast. We worry daily about our children and our pets, bikers, joggers, walkers, etc. There are 11 children in the 100 block next to the stop sign. Residents coming from the south towards Will pass our homes at a very high rate of speed. We've seen many bottom out of the intersections. And I noticed a speed sign up last week. They stop at Maple and they race to the speed side to see how high they can get it to register. That did no good, guys. That actually was worse. Just a year ago, there was a Downs syndrome child sat down in the middle of Perry. Nobody slowed down, nobody stopped. One of the other neighbors had to come out of their house and rescue this child, and nobody slowed down or stopped for that person either. It's very dangerous. From a property value standpoint, I'm a professional realtor. I have been for 21 years. This is a marketing challenge, to say the least, when trying to promote a home for sale that is in a no parking street with no overflow access. Okay? People do not want to live where there's no overflow parking consideration. July 2017, there was an online publication called The National Realtor. That's where a lot of us get what we call our comps for sale. I'm currently now in commercial real estate. I haven't sold homes for several years. However, I keep my finger on it because the girl never knows when she's gonna have to go back to the old school ways of doing things. Okay? Eighteen percent reduction in property value. Thirty-seven percent longer on the market than houses with overflow traffic, which means anywhere from forty-seven to ninety days longer on the market than a house you could park right in front of. Okay? We also have a home-based daycare on our street. You'll be impacting her economically when her parents have to walk blocks in the pool, dark and heat, carrying small children to and from with all their gear. Most likely, the inconvenience and lack of vision drop off will have some looking to go elsewhere. Safety becomes an issue as Harrisburg becomes less small-town America, and it is daily because I watch the website. My husband's car glove box was open this morning and the window rolled half down. We didn't do that. Okay? I don't, I don't want my daughter coming home after practice after her job, after school, and walking two or three blocks in the dark, jacking for position to park on the side streets because you know if we can't park on Elm or on Perry, they're gonna be on Elm, they're gonna be on Ivy, they're gonna be on Anna Way and possibly even as far down as Maple. We have a lot of people that rely on Perry. There will also be strained neighbor relations, and I met some really cool neighbors at this last meeting. We all got together, we had a water, we had cookies, we shot the shit, we introduced ourselves. I have a list of names, addresses, and phone numbers of everybody who attended that doesn't want this to happen, and you can have this. I don't want to piss off the lady a block down because my daughter and I have to park in front of her house when that's someplace she's been parking for 20 years. Okay? Most of us at this meeting have lived here 30 or 40 years. My husband's owned his home for 30. I've lived here for six. And I sold my house in Sioux Falls to come to Harrisburg because it was still a little piece of small-town America and I wanted to live here. I like the way y'all do things up until today. Okay? We're now being punished for lack of city planning for new growth and development, guys. Let's pave Southeastern. We already don't park there. That is already a thoroughfare. They're racing down that gravel. You can get to all those side streets, and that will be our connection straight into Sioux Falls and that booming part of the east side of that city. Okay? Area should become a secondary access road into the southern parts of the newer development neighborhoods. The city of Harrisburg needs to look into paving, and that will be wide enough to accommodate the increasing traffic as we develop farther southward, and that's where we're going to go because east and west, we're out of boundaries. Okay? In conclusion, here's my list, all opposing the parking ban on Perry Avenue, not just Perry residents, but all the residents that will also be impacted on the side streets by this disastrous proposition. Did you like my paper?
No, please.
That's all I had for you gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there anybody else?
I'm careful of public speaking, so please bear with me. I'm class herb. I own the Anthem daycare on Perry. Besides the stuff that's already been mentioned, it's a real safety concern for me and my parents. Like I said, my driveway is not big enough to accommodate more than one or two dropping off or picking up at the same time. So they would have to sit there and circle block waiting for my driveway to empty or, you know, walk several blocks to small children down this busy street. So it's just a huge safety concern. I did email several people about my safety concerns just for the daycare kids. I think you might have got some emails from some of my parents too because they were also not thrilled about having to walk down the street several blocks, especially into busy street, winter, bad weather. You know, a lot of times they'll park on the street just waiting for the driveway to open up if it's bad weather or super busy time. That is my biggest concern as a daycare owner. Obviously, all the other concerns that were mentioned as a homeowner as well. So I hope you really take that into consideration when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? State your name and address.
Chris Abrahamson, 207 Perry Lane. Been there for the last 11 years. I have four children, two still at home, and quicker than I would like, they will be up driving each. With the short driveway in both my wife and I using our garage, that will put our children, friends, and family parking in the streets. As of right now, believe that each family has a reasonable chance of being able to park in front of their own homes. That will change whether the city puts a complete ban on parking or partially. What the city will be doing is forcing us to find other places to park. This puts a burden on the entire community as we will be forced to park in front of our neighbors' homes on the side streets or find an open spot in that three block or whatever it is radius. On Perry specifically, the intersection of Perry and Elm gets to be a huge mess anytime it rains, and during the winter, it is a mix of ice and water, which would, which we would have to walk through. And during the winter, walking through this intersection will be an absolute nightmare. A huge safety risk, especially for children, elderly, or anyone with any kind of handicap or disability. Remember, we do not have any sidewalks in our neighborhood, and our laws were never designed to have sidewalks. There's just not enough room. Now, how is the city going to make sure that all the people can walk safely from one end of the ban to the other end? And without sidewalks, isn't the city putting its residents in harm's way when one slips or falls or worse? Will the city be liable for these injuries? I believe that in today's world, we are seeing a lot of overreach by local governments across our country. And I think we're all worried that just because you can do something does not mean you should. The impact that will, the impact that this will have on the daily lives of the residents in the area is huge. Home values could drop, as she previously stated. Homes in the area could sit on the market much longer, as she previously stated, than those not impacted by this. So please, look at every house, think of every person living there, and the people that will have to traverse these roads in dangerous conditions before you make your decision. There are other options that we should be looking at to lighten the traffic and ease travel on our street before we should ever consider this. And for future developments in our community, let's take this into consideration prior to approving new developments so we aren't putting people in the same situation in the future. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes. All right, we'll move on. First business item, table business item, consider pilot project of Main Street, one-way traffic, the street. Markings and signage, Joe.
Evening. Well, last council meeting, we discussed this at length about some of the impacts this initiative would have as far as impacts to the residents specifically that came and we discussed a lot of their concerns. One of the things that task staff with was to look at an alternative layout. And so I adjusted the previous one. We moved the ADA all the way over to the east end, and that connects to the current sidewalk better. And then we also adjusted at the, at the west end. There is some angle parking there, and we changed that to parallel parking. So we lost a couple stalls there. But still, with this layout, you get about fifteen or sixteen stalls. The previous was seventeen or eighteen. If we just kept it as is, I believe, what was it, twelve or thirteen? But then you have that congestion issue. People are parking equal size, and so it really turns into a one-way street regardless. Right? And so, but this, you know, it improves safety. It's, it adds ADA. And it's kind of just one step forward in trying to figure out what our downtown should look like and improve that. And so, like we had discussed, this is a pilot project, a trial case, to see if this would work. I suggested one year, you know, have all the seasons and see how it goes. And if we don't like it, you know, it's just paint, and we can just let it fade or remove it. And so that's where we're at today.
What I'm concerned with that homeowner, the homeowner directly adjacent to the park had was being able to back out there. Amber, have you shown this to them at all?
Be here. It provides the same amount of space you would have without this initiative. With the parallel parking across the street, if somebody was parked there, it'd be the same situation they had previously.
Guess my only concern on this whole deal here, I mean, I can see it doing a sidewalk for sure. The parking on the one-way, I'm not overly excited about. I know that street does get hammered quite hard before and after school, the traffic. And I don't know if that it's slowed down or not. I know because the traffic is back up on Willow. And I've heard, I haven't seen it, but I'm gonna definitely go up there Thursday morning and check it out. But I heard that a lot of traffic uses that road to bypass, to crosswalk from the people backing up or backing up on Willow. So I don't know. I'm not really pickled about that part, but I can completely see it putting a sidewalk along there.
I would respond to that by, you know, right now with the parallel parking, a lot of those parents are trying to park as close to Prairie as possible so that they can see their kids, right? Hey, wave it up. And so you get that congestion on Prairie right at that intersection where with this, with angle parking, you get more people able to get stacked closer to Prairie. And also with one-way streets, you do slow down in that traffic. You force people to go slower. And so, and you know, this, this street only gets about 50 cars a day. That's probably all at that time. There's probably, the city employees, we live, are working at City Hall there. They probably use that more than most people on a daily basis. And so, but when there are events downtown to have a centralized parking area would be a huge benefit to that. So everyone's sort of looking at parking in the downtown area. We should see if this angle parking is actual feasible.
Did you have something to say?
There's something right here.
Yeah.
Someone can use first thought instead of that sidewalk. Are you going back to that issue?
Just, just in front of here to make this park handicap accessible. What's that?
Nothing down Perry or.
This is. No, this is strictly just for this park. That's just, just for the park.
Go down Maple, over the railroad track, take your left to Maple there. You're in this thing. If someone parks on that side, some parks on that side, you got to see the lane.
Oh, it's all over down. Yeah.
Why would you just have Perry? Where.
We'll, we'll talk about that when it comes to that business item.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm definitely.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get there. We'll get there. We'll get there.
I will sit down.
Thank you.
My concern with not, I mean, we can do this now. Doesn't work, doesn't work. We're, we talked about $3,000 of paint versus if we were to jump into that to create the parking, that's gonna be 20,000. Right. And then we're gonna, if we do the sidewalk now, then we'll rip it out. We're wasting money on the sidewalk just to move it again. Right? But I want the sidewalk to be for ADA. I mean, we have ADA swing that we have. It's one of them, easily one of our least utilized parks. And that's our oldest park.
That's one of my concerns, you know, like Derek said, the sidewalk needs to be for access. That's no question. I've driven by this park a handful of times. So if we put the parking in, is anybody gonna use it? Are we gonna know if it works or not? Or do we wait for, try to do some more improvements to the park, try to bring people there and then look at that option once we start seeing more visitors there?
Yes.
I think my issue, we've been here 43 years. We're at the corner of Perry Lane and Elm. And we've seen a lot of change over the years. My biggest concern is if you take more vehicles off the street, you're going to have more speeding problems. I've had, we've had people come across that and bottom out sparks going across our inner intersection there. And I think the more vehicles you take off the street, I think more problems we're gonna have. We're a white street. I, I understand that. But I think we need to consider the fact that, you know, I, I stood out on the end of my driveway and slowed people down. You know, you don't need a, you don't.
Yeah, we'll talk, we'll.
Oh, I don't, I know. This is, this is just, you know, my view of, of the situation.
Well, those are, those are good points. Maybe we do need to add more things to park and have people come there, but I think it's a chicken and egg kind of thing too. Do we?
What are our options after if we put in the sidewalk? I mean, I'm not gonna take out anything else. I'm not gonna.
Right.
We don't want to make the park small. What is it, $15,000 sidewalk going in there? Or 10?
Fifteen, right? Yeah, about fifteen.
So I mean, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna go back in and rip it out to put a park. Where else is our park? A lot that we own?
This initiative, this, this all started with, we try to add ADA parking to all of our parks, and to do that, you often eat up your park space.
Is there a way just to put a parallel parking right there and designate it?
We could, we can, we can. Follow out, you know, I see you're saying follow out, just one, one or two stalls there. Certainly could do that, and then we could bring the sidewalk in around there.
I know every time we're there for events, whether it's Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, or National Night Out, whatever, that, all the kids are on the cannon anyway, so. We just put more guns there.
Excuse me, guys. Sorry. Not my issue, but from a marketing standpoint, or is there any other park in town that's handicap accessible?
Or the park, Lions Park, that was Larson is.
Have you ever thought of concentrating your handicap accessible access and toys and playground area and parking to one park? Such as that oldest women's mill in town and marketing it?
It was, it was the park board's purview to make it a point so that every park has ADA, and that's part of what the disability committee is also pushing for to make sure.
I know they want.
Everything's accessible. And we want, they are, there's, all the things are already in that are in every park that we have at least one thing ADA in every park.
But that's the problem. It's one thing.
Well, as, it's not a huge budget for the park board.
No, I get that. I get that.
So when we have $40,000 budget to do things, they, we'd have to do a sidewalk. Well, that's $20,000. That's half the budget. When we force your budget, but that has to be as retrieved. So things like that, it's something that they're working towards. And having been on the park board for five plus years, Kevin was on it. Berg was on it. So, I mean, we've all kind of come from there. Tom and us, right in front of you, is actually currently on the park board. It's something that you work towards. You just gotta pick and choose what you can and work towards it. I wish we had a super ball budget.
I was talking about from a marketing standpoint, I'm, I'm the mother of a handicap child. And as she was growing up, she's like, no, I don't need to worry about it. But as she was growing up, I struggled to find things that were, and you need to use the word label, but that's what it is. You just have to find a tactical way of doing it. I would rather have had access to one park that had three cool things for her to play on than a park with one cool thing, and then I had to go to a different park every time she could play one thing. If I had a park that was marketed with three cool things, we'd go there all the time. That's all I was trying to say.
It's a great point. I, and I would, you know, just that, you know, when I was a member of the park board, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, this party hands down was always the one that had the most concerns from residents who had disability concerns, that this was the one that had the least amount for the kids that lived in that area. And so we've tried to do a lot, or we did try to do a lot when I was on the park board, to do those type of things, get swings, but making it accessible and doing the things that need to be done. You know, you want to be accommodating to everybody in all parts of town too. And so, yeah, it's baby steps and doing the little things that you want to do. So that being said, it's, this is the one that we, you know, we need. There's some focus that needs to be put on this park to accommodate the people that live in that neighborhood. So otherwise, there's zero things. So until we had swings and that kind of stuff.
So right now, we're, as far as going back to actual table item or the business item, we're just talking about the, well, not the one-way Main Street, that one block portion. We're not talking about the sidewalk right now at all.
No.
I'll make a motion to table this.
You want a table again?
Yeah.
It hasn't been.
Okay. I wouldn't. I, let's leave it at table.
Put it at table?
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to President from 2017 to prove a parking, not personal spruce street, Joe.
About a month ago, when we started this discussion on no parking zones, this was brought to staff's attention. This area is spruce from Shevo about 500 feet to the west as some congestion. It's almost to the edge of the apartment building lot, which would be about 500 feet. And so there is some congestion there. I don't know if it's necessarily all apartment building tenants, or we have those that are called Z-Lons, those villas, where you have a little more density there. And so there's more parking along that way. I also understand that there's school buses use that route quite often. And so there's just have a congestion issue there. And so while it's not one of the main collectors, it still is a collector's street in this neighborhood.
Yeah, Matt McCready, who lives at the, was it 3201 there? He's the one that contacted me about having that changed to no parking along there, mainly just from the stop sign or from the intersection to that first driveway and those apartment complexes. Because it does get congested there, and for a while, we were having guys park like directly right, right to the right of his driveway, blocking that stop sign. So when you pulled up there, you couldn't see right or left because there's cars parked on both sides of the intersection. And the one night, he actually watched the kid almost get hit there because they couldn't see, and they're trying to look for traffic coming. And that's the night he called me to ask if there was something that we could do about that because that is a bus stop at that spot in the mornings as well.
So I selected 500 feet because we usually just go back about a block or two or to the next collector. I don't, I'm not around this corner when.
It's mainly.
It's mainly from that intersection to that driveway to the other two years. There's hardly anybody that parks in between those next set of driveways. And I, I walk down that street every night.
Should we, instead of going the 500 feet, dial that back?
I, I would. Definitely.
To just the first.
Just to the first.
Yeah, that first driveway. Do we do full sides or?
They can't park on, they can't park on.
They're too close to.
They can't park on, legally, they can't park on that because they gotta be 30 feet back from the stop sign. So.
Stop people.
It doesn't, but they'll be picketed for it. So.
Is it per painted in that area?
On Shevo.
On Shevo, yes.
I guess I would just do full size just to make it clear and obvious that that needs to be a, a clear area. And it looks like it would only really impact person on the corner.
Who's requesting?
Who is requesting it? So we can go back and attend or adjust that resolution and bring that back next council meeting.
Maybe if we just hired some placement, our own police department, we wouldn't have the problem. Our county's not doing a good job of this. I called in to slow the traffic down, and you don't even see them. And if they show up, they show up in the middle of the afternoon, everybody is at work. We actually need patrolmen out there. And we had Terry as a cop and others. This town was slower. Now it's a race back. I bought the old radar gun, fifty C L gas to do, and they're walking out at 45 and 50 in front of our, where we live. I live on Perry Lane, right in the corner, and I never. I only run Perry Lane right in the corner, and I never park a pickup on that side, and if I do, I do it for one reason. Slow the traffic down, they got to slow down. They come off that hill and they're moving. And that's how, you know, that's the biggest thing in that road, is the traffic speed. We gotta get that address, and the whole town, I think, that's the problem with speed. Give them some tickets out. I drove a truck years ago, you come through Ivy, and if you come through at thirty-five forty, you are paying a ticket, that cop's got you. And to this day, I go to that town, and why go to that town? I drop it down to twenty because he might be there, I know he hasn't gone. If, if, when we have to do something about it, we can't just sit here with our finger in our nose, we have to address this. Get some police out there.
I get the police report, I get the month, I get the monthly police report, and they're definitely doing their job, and I've received several emails. I've received two, I've received two emails, actually phone calls from people complaining because they got speeding tickets coming into our town, but weren't even from our. I know the cops are doing their job.
I always tell people, if you have an issue with, with the county sheriffs, email Sheriff Swenson.
I ran pop first, that's like popping the trick.
Okay.
He says, I'll drive.
Sorry, Howard. Go, Howard.
I'm done.
A couple of years ago, they would just give me money. If that was would have been taken, it would have gotten around, hey, guys, don't be doing this down there, you're gonna get a ticket. Whether it be twenty-five and fifty, whatever, because they come blind down Perry, and I'm sorry, I did that in my ass for twenty-one years. And my mom's from the Davidson, but I. Don't have kids anymore, my son's fallen out, but I would fight the pressure on her with the daycare. Then I, so, I know, and you just didn't take one vehicle on the side. You know, it's just bleeding through traffic. So, we do park, that way to slow it down.
We'll move on with this business item, and we'll carry on.
I went off again.
We're not there, not quite there yet. So, we don't need to do anything on this, we're gonna, we're gonna revise it to go back to the. Do we have a motion to table that there?
No.
Now, we'll move on to resolution twenty eighteen. To private parking portion of South Perry Lane.
Yep.
Okay.
So, Perry Lane from Mo Street down to Maple, uh, access to Collector Street for this neighborhood, the southeast area, as I call it. This area is about two hundred acres and, uh, it has about three hundred and fifty residential homes in this area. Now, that amount of people. Is, would generate about thirty-three hundred trips per day. Now, this area has Perry, uh, Grand also acts as a collector, Maple also is a major collector. And then you also have Walnut, Chester, and then South Perry also that, that gets those people out to arterial roads. We did some traffic counts, uh, along Perry, um, just early August here, and I was at about, um, on average. Eight hundred and twenty vehicles a day. We also did a traffic count previously in January of this year, and now it's at eleven hundred vehicles per day, so that was when schools in session. And also before all this COVID stuff, I think that's really affected traffic counts currently, uh, people aren't traveling the same ways they used to. So, anyway, this, this Perry takes about a thousand vehicles a day. But then respective, other collector streets in this, in this town, um, Perry about between five months and two thousand vehicles a day. So, it's right in that, uh, range of a collector street, it acts as a collector street. And so, there was a, a comment that, uh, we should just pave southeastern, that would solve the problem. The way that, uh. Your arterial road network and collector street network is supposed to be laid out is, uh, collector, major collectors should be spaced about every quarter mile along an arterial street. And so, uh, and that collector is supposed to collect people from the local streets onto that collector and bring it up to the arterial street. And so, Perry Lane is an exact right place for that. And so, if you were to pave Maple or a southeastern. You would probably get some of that traffic off Perry Lane, for sure. But you shouldn't pave southeastern with the intent to remove Perry as a collector street. Perry should be a collector street now and going forward. So, there's that, there's also paving southeastern would cost well over a million dollars. And, uh, the cost benefit of that. We don't currently have any development on the east side, and there is any development planned for the east side of that street, and so, you're not really getting. Uh, the best bang for your buck, so to say, on that, and a lot of, uh. We prioritize the arterial street network in the last couple of months, and this one is, uh, higher up on that list, but it's still not the highest priority. So, there's that.
Isn't there also the fact that half of Perry, the half of southeastern is owned by the Springdale Township?
Right, yeah.
They're responsible for half maintenance on that, yes, that's not just all, so, if we do that, we're paying for Springdale to, we're giving them a favor to just pave it, take it over.
Yes.
And it is do that. I'm sure what it's doing. It was paved a few, uh, about eight years ago, wasn't it?
Kind of paved, yeah.
Around that. Chip seal, and because of the.
It wasn't done appro, it wasn't done the right way, and we tried to do a cost, cost-effective way of doing that, and it didn't last, and so, to do it the right way.
It busts up a bunch.
It's gonna cost at least a million dollars, and that would even get down to the end of the next intersection, that's just down to Perry at the south end, goes out to southeastern. So, a few thirty miles, that's a million dollars. And so, there.
There's no sidewalks or anything.
But.
That's no sidewalks, that's just straight.
Uh-uh, no, that's making sure your sideslopes are appropriate and just enough width for your. Your asphalt, and then any drainage issues that you might run into. So, it, it adds up quickly, if you really wanted to sidewalk soon and all the, make the street look really pretty, it also goes way up to like three million dollars. So. It, it's a, it's a huge expense, and it wouldn't be eliminating Perry as a collector street, because Perry should be a collector. And so, collector street standards. Standard for a collector street is the roadway itself is thirty-eight feet wide. And that's providing seventy of parking on both sides and twelve-foot driveways. Perry from Willow down to Anaway or Elm Street is thirty feet wide. And then, once you get from Elm to Maple, it widens slowly out to thirty-seven feet, so it almost meets the standard when you get down to Maple. Before the area, those two blocks towards Willow. It, it doesn't get the standard even close, and so. I mapped out this area of, uh. There's certain ordinances in the city where you can't park within fifteen feet. Of fire hydrant, can't park the mailbox during daylight hours, you can't park within thirty feet of a, of a stop sign. Can't park in front of a driveway, can't park twenty-five feet in front of an intersection. And so, what you end up with is just, you have eleven parking spaces on the east side between Willow and Elm. And you have seventeen spaces on the west side between Willow and Elm, and then from Elm to Maple, you have nine on either side. And so, there are fifteen lots between Willow and Elm. One of those lots doesn't have a, a dwelling on it, and four of those lots are corner lots where they have parking on the side street. And so, you're left with ten lots that rely. Their only option for on-street parking would be on Perry Lane, ten lots.
I guess I could park on Willow, that's full of traffic, Elm is the lot, and we're thinking about putting the house on, I own the lot.
I have driven this street. In the last couple of weeks, probably. Twenty-four, twenty-five times. Uh, the most I've ever seen parked on that street was three. And that was in the evening. Uh, the morning hours when I've driven down that, I've had maybe one or two, and the one that is always parked in front of the stop sign up on Willow. Um, I've driven down. Drived on Shevo every day, and. What, what, what you're trying to eliminate here, I see on Shevo daily. I mean, it turns into a one lane going through there, so, there was a lot more parking previous few months. There were R Ds parked all along this road. And trucks sitting there.
So, make it one, one way down to, uh, that port, down to Maple down, and make it one way, and then that way, they'll be parking on both sides, and they'll be, everybody will be happy, it'll be one way.
They won't be happy south of us.
I would.
That's where a lot of the traffic comes from, the speeders, I should say.
And so, if you were to, uh, enact no parking on both sides for those three blocks, um, you would have thirty feet of roadway. To travel down, and so, with your drivelines of twelve feet, not twenty, so twenty-four feet total, you have six extra feet that aren't really being used, and, uh. You know, that's. You can leave that to the, to the drivers, um, you can designate that as clear space or nobody should park, and that would provide some more visibility. Um, a lot of the issue with a congested or tight, narrow, uh, right away and street width is the visibility. Right, you're not able to see cars coming at you, uh, or pedestrians or bicyclists. Uh, and it's not even so much that there's twenty cars parked on the street. If there's two cars parked on the street, it becomes an issue. So, it's not the amount of cars, it's the fact that the street isn't wide enough. And so.
So, what's the issue, that people have to slow down and wait, let somebody go by, I lived there for thirty-five years, it's been that way since I lived there.
What's the?
Imagine we have more, we have more traffic now.
I was gonna say the same thing.
But I, it's been like that from, I mean, you've always had to give and take that, no matter how, you know.
The people that are just waiting are the people that live there, and we're used to it, we're not.
That's what I was gonna say, you know, I think I'm just used to it, I don't think about it, but, you know, we're more cautious.
See, he's talking about a, a safety issue with getting to that pinpoint position, well, there's just as much safety issue, in my opinion. Uh, when people having a lock on the road during winter, one person slipping and falling could be worse than somebody setting off their airbag and pick, you know.
And then laying their act up.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
So, if we're talking about safety, because I think there's a bigger safety issue that could put the city liable, in my opinion. Uh, than what he's talking about.
I, I mean, I under, I understand that we have a lot more people in here, reminding you it's fun for people, you know, or whatever, I love people, and more. But it just seems like you're punishing people with a group year long time. Their street becomes.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna go from here, wait for what we need to hear, I think, pretty clear.
What's that?
I continue.
If you have more.
Yeah, yeah, you have more.
And so, uh, if you were to do no parking on both sides of that street, it would, like I said, impact. Twelve lots that would no longer have on-street parking, and so. Uh, this wouldn't be the first time we've done that in Harrisburg, we've identified streets that were previously had parking on both sides, residential lots, and those lots. No longer are able to park in the street, and we're provided that in an ordinance, you can do that, and so, we do that from time to time around town. Because we need to adapt to the changing. Uh, issues and standards, a long time ago, when this street was constructed. Our cars weren't the same size, you know, there were different standard people, people that lived in this neighborhood, there wasn't as much traffic. Kids could walk down the street pretty safely, uh, but things have changed since then, and we need to adapt to that. And so, uh. If we were to enact no parking on both sides. The lots that don't have on-street parking, if they were to park on Ivy Lane, the furthest they would have to walk is about five hundred feet.
Why don't you walk that?
And so, five hundred feet. Can be a distance, if you're doing that every day, if you're having, uh, a get-together or something like that, maybe not so much of a deal.
Do you think people on Ivy Lane are gonna be happy about that?
I live on Ivy, that's right here.
So, it's actually not affecting eleven homes, it's affecting everyone.
You're not gonna have any friends involved in that, are you?
I wanna know how it's affected their property. Or can you tell us what perhaps you guys have?
The only other area that we've done, the other area we've done it is right next to town. They're a rental. I have no idea.
Yes.
And so, that's one option for you all, is no parking on both sides, there's other options, uh, you can do no parking on one side. And at that point, you're, either way, you would, um, either have eleven stalls or seventeen stalls, uh, if you enacted no parking on one side. And so, with that, you would have seven foot of no, of parking, twelve-foot driveway, twelve-foot driveway, and you're at thirty-one feet. That's really close to the standard. You would need, uh. We have thirty feet of street width here, and you would need thirty-one feet to meet that, while, say, eleven, eleven and a half feet drivelines, you might find that acceptable. And so, having only no parking on one side and parking on the other, you have plenty of space for folks who live along this street to park across the street on that one side. And you're not walking as far, you're not walking in the dark, or all those other issues that they brought up.
So, what happens when you get coming there and the neighbor's car is in front of your driveway, and these people are seventy-four years old, seventy-six years old, where they gonna park? Oh, I will park behind Ivy Lane, you bring your car out, bring it back for me, it's empty home.
See, part of the problem, too, is this is an older neighborhood, where there's only single or double garages and driveways. We don't have the triple garages like the neighbors down the street, the ones that are speeding through, there is no parking but street parking.
And whether it's one side or two sides that you're panning, you're still going to force people to, you know, tow further down the street, or, you know, like I said, right now, you have a reasonable chance of, you know, parking from your home. Uh, whether it's both sides or just the one side, you're forcing people, and once you force people, then I feel like. Uh, you're putting them in that, uh, risk during the winter, that's my biggest thing during the winter, during the summer, uh, I don't think it's as big of an issue, but during the winter, I just. I, I would have one of these, having a part, you know, around the corner, um, and have to walk up, whether it's teenage kids or grandparents or parents, whoever it is. I, I would, I don't think that, uh, that risk outweighs what you're talking about.
And it, I'm sorry, if you choose, because if I was to go selling home, which is paid off by the mommy, oh, and by the way, when you buy the home, oh, you can't park there. You know, they're a family of five, let's say, four, two of them are gonna wind up with cars and, and four. And what do they do, switch around every day? They're accommodating, it's just, I don't know.
Okay, and so, if we were to only have no parking on one side, um, you still have that tight street width, right? And so, I would say that we probably need at least sidewalk on one side of that street. Now, there's also another option where we widen the street, but I don't find that feasible, we only have fifty feet of right away there, and to have your standard street of thirty-eight feet. And your sidewalks of six feet, there's nothing, nothing there left, and then, it really impacts the homeowner because it really looks different, and it might affect the aesthetics of that neighborhood. And, yeah, it's.
And you guys are gonna buy land, you're gonna build a land all the way to the curb, how does that work?
Maybe self-concern is a better option, instead of buying all the land on Perry.
And the whole value that's gonna get lost, I think it's worth paying themselves.
And so, we, we, uh, we had some concerns about this meeting along. And so we, we uh, we had some concerns about this meeting along this corridor, and so we set up that speech trailer. And uh, let's see, the statistics on that, the average speed during those eight days was nineteen miles an hour.
Of course, they slow down when there's a rain or a.
Fifty percent.
Yeah.
How many kids ran by it?
Point of wonder, point of wonder. Let's see if you have a chance to give his report and then if you have more to own to say something and tell it to him.
Fifty percent of the vehicles traveled at twenty miles an hour or less. Eighty-five percent traveled at twenty-two miles or less. And so uh, now that speech trailer, but when. When people see it, they should check their speed, right? Now, there are some people that try to get the record or whatever. Uh, so it probably does have, it's not a full measure of the actual speeds we're going down that road. But it does give some sort of perspective on the speeds going down that road. And so fifty miles an hour might look like. Uh, well, thirty-five miles an hour might look like fifty miles an hour if you're standing there. And so it's all perspective. So thirty-five miles an hour is, is still fast. You know, it's still really hurting you if you were hit by a car. But uh.
It almost needs to be nine mile an hour.
If we were to do, enact a no parking on one side or both sides, you know, it's gonna. Going to provide sufficient two-lane traffic down this street that we need. Um, now, will people take advantage of that and try to speed?
Yeah, they will.
Uh, and so they're, they're probably uh to preemptively um try to stop that a little, we could put a. You know, additional signage or show that there is actual fines to that, and that we really need to have the sheriff or law enforcement. Um, enforce those. So um, that's what I have.
Yeah, which side of the street has more parking?
Uh, the west side. So that's all I had. Um. You know, we, we went into this with no parking on either side, you know, uh, no parking on one side is uh, you know, maybe. Uh, acceptable compromise to it. Um, but ultimately, this is a collector's tree and it collects collector-type traffic. And it should continue to collect that type of traffic. It shouldn't be turned into a local street. And to accommodate that traffic, really the only way is to do some sort of parking adjustment. So like I said before, things change, standards change, traffic flows change, development comes in, and we need to adapt. And I'm very utilitarian where the greatest good for the greatest number of people. And so as an engineer, that's, my mind works that way. Uh, obviously, you guys are in a different position. So these are, these are the facts that I brought to you. Uh, so if you have questions for me. I'll have.
Thank you, Carol.
So um, the streets are collecting, you know, spending for fifty years that narrow. Why did we make that a collector's tree? When that street was that narrow, we get a full rear start from scratch. Why didn't we plan to do better, make wider streets? And again, like southeastern drive, if that was paved, people could go that way.
I'll say, I'll say.
Narrow street.
My phone number and my email is on the letter that I sent.
Yeah.
Uh, it's on the website, and I'd be more than happy to talk to you all up in person, I'll meet you and talk through this.
We're right here, right?
We're all here.
We want answers now.
I'm not doing to stand in front of a mob. I just, I'm a mob, not.
Because you're messing with ours as bad.
If you're gonna say it, you need to yell that answer. There's no reason why you can't answer to it right up here.
Right now.
You guys who have no answers.
Well, this is. Might as well put a fifty-five mile an hour sign on.
Where are you letting you off?
And it turned it into a race track.
That's his plan. That's his plan. That's his plan.
They think they're passing out, right? Maybe you should make the collector's street over by the church where there is a house.
So has everybody been getting home okay the way it is now? Parking on the street or?
We got one accident in our, our street, and that was in the middle of the night. Our van got hit by. Otherwise, there's.
Thirty years you've been there.
We're ready for him. So I will make a motion to not approve resolution twenty twenty dash one eight to prohibit the parking in the portion of South Perry Lane. Second.
Can't.
This way, motion in the negative camp.
It fails for.
Okay. I would um. Can I direct staff? The direct staff uh to continue to monitor that area. And uh, I will be having a conversation with Sheriff Swenson. And you should see some presents out there. Coming days.
Well, they use video evidence as far as speeding and everything that goes on, because we have cameras all along the street.
Yep, if you, if you have people breaking the law, you can email stuff to them. Anytime.
I'd like to say something. My name is Jim Newberg. I was on the air lane. I've been there some seventy feet. We built that road. It was not designed for. Through a street. I want to eliminate it so they have to go and grab a rope, cut off the other end. How many more houses could be building down that end?
None or none?
Well.
Built up.
Yeah, I've been there. Like I said, some seventy-five. And there's never been an accident, nobody ever. As long as they're designed.
People just know they gotta be a little bit more cautious.
I live, I live, I live on Rosewood and Sheville, and let me tell you, if you got speeders, come over to my house. It's ridiculous. I know there's kids that go fifty some miles an hour down.
I live on a honeysuckle with school buses.
Yeah, I am a school bus.
So again, where are the cops?
They're on my street. I've seen them in front of my house. I've talked to them, so.
I've seen you times on the Harrisburg watch when people ask you, and I tell them they're neighborhoods, and it seems like they are kinda.
It is hard for a cop to be everywhere.
It is hard.
Have they ever sat on one car?
Oh, it's simple, okay, one year. All right, well, thank you as well for coming. What's that?
He's wondering if I know the four-way stops like down Elm, they all, where that tip is.
That's kind of the dip. Should.
It would be sure people from coming that way though.
Yeah, no, yeah. We'll move on to. Item number four. Approve and, approve and authorize mayor to sign amendment number two, stockpile areas. Thank you for coming.
Sorry about.
Thank you. That's fine. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So this uh amendment is for the west side sewer. Uh, we're talking to the developer, the layout. Layout didn't follow the street or the tree. Layout didn't follow the stream at all. And so uh, to adjust that, they've just some design changes, also some recent acquisitions and things like that. Uh, so I believe that he was. Uh, just an amendment to the design um and uh.
I'll use. I'm going to approve and authorize the mayor to sign amendment number two for the west side trucks sewer design to adjust the alignment portion of the sewer made in the amount of. Three thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars from stockpile.
Second, I have a motion and a second for the discussion. Mary roll call.
Hank.
All right.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Awesome.
Hi.
Hi.
Item number five, approve, approve and authorize the mayor to sign change order number one from southeastern ditch grading project. Joe, the original uh construction extensive this uh project has been extended to cover more of that ditch. We thought to improve some of the drainage a little further up. Uh, we would extend that. I believe the, the primary way the project started was more towards the Ostby property. So we would be working up in front of uh those townhomes there and um the next culvert, I believe, is just that. And so we, we were going to grow, we would like to um just expand the amount of dirt removed and add a culvert adjustment to it.
How's the water been flowing there and the rest of that?
South of Perry, very well. That's why.
I haven't noticed any standing water at all.
Yeah, it was been dry, but it's right north of Perry.
It seems like almost the, you know, how on Raven, how that there's those sump pumps that constantly run no matter what. Feels like that area where it goes into that little drainage way over to southeastern, doesn't back up nearly as much either.
It's been a really dry year.
Uh, but I mean, even when it's been really wet, it hasn't backed up the same.
Yeah, yeah, it has. And so I'm really excited to take the next step and try to get even more of that going. Um, and I could see there are, especially around the Ostby property, there's kind of these choke points at those culverts. If we were to open those up, I think the rest of that ditch will really drain better. We have that ponding and cat tail going on.
So where couldn't we do it is then? Well, where the hell's first place, right? We can't do it there.
We are, we are at uh, Mr. Ostby has uh allowed us to go through there and bump all that out through the drainage way and also in front of this.
So on both sides, the south side and the east side?
Yeah. And we'd work our way up further until we get, till we remove enough dirt to stop. We've hit that forty-nine thousand threshold.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea in the first place, so.
Right.
I'm going to approve and authorize the mayor to sign change order one for the southeastern ditch grading project to increase the ditch grading spend up to forty-nine thousand five hundred for the cleaning.
Second, I have a motion and a second change order number one. Any further discussion? Mary roll call please.
Hank.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Awesome.
Hi.
Bert.
Number six, consider quote for concrete repairs package number two, Joe. Uh, this is another concrete repair project. This one is primarily inlets. And it's uh mostly in the southeast, central, and green meadows parts of uh the city. For the older inlets are, and uh, as they're deteriorating or getting by snow piles or whatever, they just need to fix them kind of times. So we, we looked at eighteen of them, swallowed some of the curb right next to it, fixing some of those.
I'm going to approve the quote from six oh five companies, making the amount of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents for concrete repairs.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the quote for concrete repairs. Any further discussion? Mary roll call.
Hank.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Awesome.
Hi. Number seven, consider quote for traffic painting package number three.
This one is mostly the no parking zones enacted last council meeting.
Like with fence along.
Well, yeah.
That fence looks nice.
Literally.
There's a fence there.
Uh, adding the no, are the, sorry, the pedestrian crossings, the bike lane, and then uh. We also noticed, uh, since we're doing those school crossings, uh, let's just paint those. Are the, you know, where they say pedestrian crossing and lettering, we're doing that. Uh, let's just do the crossings also. Let's just get everything nice and fresh. And so I just added those two on the bottom there. So we got a quote for that.
I'm going to approve the quote for traffic stations in the amount of four thousand, two hundred and five dollars for traffic.
Second, I have a motion and a second to approve the quote for traffic painting. Is there any further discussion? Mary roll call.
Hank.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Awesome.
Hi.
Hi.
Item number eight, consider quote for sidewalk improvements project. Uh, we have identified a couple of locations to add some sidewalk. It's mostly along the cemetery, um, south of the middle school. I understand a lot of students use that route. There's kind of a gap in the sidewalk. I spoke to the uh caretaker of the cemetery land, and he was fine with that. He just didn't want to maintain it. So either city staff or, or school staff will maintain that. We also are adding a approach up towards Maple. We see that a lot of people uh are going up that sidewalk and there's no real place to cross. And since Maple is a, a street and collector, um, it's a natural place to put a uh. A sidewalk approach. We'll have to put in a pedestrian crossing and some signage to make sure people see it. I do see, it seems to be the natural spot where most people, they run out of sidewalk there, they gotta fit in their, take a stroller through the grass and over the curb, but it's just a bad deal.
Uh, if I just add, my son is learning to ride his bike. Maybe it's that we use this uh route quite frequently. So the one Cypress right there and my mother-in-law lives at South Park. So it's a lot safer when this is gonna be added some.
Got a thumbs up.
Do, do six oh five companies and twelve thousand for sidewalk improvement.
Second, I have a motion to approve the quote for sidewalk improvements and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mary, no, no call please.
Hank.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Awesome.
Hi. Number nine, point three property owners set the value of. The twenty-ten jetback truck.
Can you say in three property owners as we did for the other two pieces of equipment, uh, new back for to be within a couple of weeks of showing up? So this is one week in surplus, so it's money out of it. I'm going to approve Steve's, Steve Albers, George Skinner, and Mark McLeod to determine and set the value of the surplus twenty-ten jetback truck.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mary roll call please.
Hank.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Awesome.
Hi.
Hi.
Number ten, second reading ordinance twenty twenty dash six discretionary formula.
Nate was here last time and explained this to you. So this is second reading.
I'm going to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six discretionary formula.
Second, I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash six. Any further discussions? Mary roll call please.
Hank.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Awesome.
Hi.
Hi.
Approve and authorize mayor to sign pay application number five for metro construction in Harrisburg Forestman.
This is the fifth pay application from Metro Construction for performance in Harrisburg Forestman. Uh, this has been reviewed by the engineer. It is mine. The one for the application is ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars.
I'm going to approve and authorize the mayor to sign pay application number five for metro construction in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and nine cents for the Harrisburg Forestman.
Second, I have a motion and a second to approve the application number five. Any further discussions? Mary roll call please.
Hank.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. For twelve, approve and authorize mayor to sign the application number one for Henry Carlson Construction, named Harrisburg wastewater reclamation facility.
This is the first pay application from Henry Carlson on the water, Harrisburg Water Reclamation Facility for work performed. So far, an amount of the application is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
This is coming from that level, right?
Yes. Both the last one and this one will be submitted for reimbursement.
Okay.
I'll move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign pay application one from Henry Carlson Construction, Inc. in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand fifteen dollars for the Harrisburg water regulation facility.
Second, I have a motion and a second to approve the application number one. Any further discussions? Mary roll call please.
Hank.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Awesome.
Hi.
Bert.
All right. Next item is approved.
Next item is approve, authorize mayor to sign Harrisburg wastewater treatment facility, S S R F reimbursement request.
And this is our own reimbursement request for those last two items that you had, and then it also includes some engineering in the amount of two hundred four thousand three hundred and seventy-five that we paid for in the last month and a half. So uh the total of this uh S R F reimbursement is four hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Seventy-three or seventy-two?
It should be seventy-three.
Okay.
I'm going to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Harrisburg wastewater treatment facility, S R F reimbursement request number six in the amount of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Second. I have a motion on a second. Any further discussion? Mary, roll call please.
Hank.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
Bert.
Approve and authorize mayor to sign Westside Trump Sewer Pay Application Number Two Form, H W Contracting.
This is the second pay application from H W Contracting, it's in the amount of two hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-five cents for work performed July seventeenth, August twelfth, on the Westside Trump Sewer line.
I'm going to approve and authorize the mayor to sign pay application number two from H W Contracting in the amount of two hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-five cents for the Westside Trump Sewer.
Second. I have a motion to approve pay application number two on a second, any further discussion? Mary, roll call please.
Hank.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi. I'm. Approve and authorize mayor to sign application for refund of property taxes parcel two seventy dot sixteen dot zero three dot zero one two.
Yeah, this is a request from Charlotte McMullins on parcel number two seven zero dot one six seven zero three dot zero one two at six oh nine Columbia Street. Um she sent this to Lincoln County Auditor and they've ordered it to us. They've approved it. After doing their research, but it was a basement finish was added to her, that's on her seventeen in seventeen. And it was indicated that she had actually canceled her building permit, that improvement was never done, so she had been taxed for basement. For three years, so. I think it should be a refund of those taxes through the county.
I'm going to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the refund of property tax applications for parcel two seventy dot sixteen dot dot zero three dot zero one two. For a total of four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-seven refund in twenty-eighteen and four hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty cents in twenty-nineteen and four hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-five cents in two thousand twenty. Second. I have a motion on a second to approve the refund of property taxes, any further discussion? Mary, roll call please.
Hank.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi. All right. Twenty twenty-one appropriation ordinance review.
Yes, I was gonna have a first reading. I didn't wanna burn every word. I might be busy tonight, but it might be busy next month too. But um we'll just kind of review a little bit of what's been included into this budget. And how it's been balanced and what we're looking at for this year. For property taxes, um there was an increase that we could include of fifty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. Um due to growth in C P I, so. A total request to the county would be for one million two hundred and ninety-four thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. We've estimated our sales tax be one million four hundred and fifty thousand for two twenty-twenty-one. We've included building permits uh at eighty thousand, the service transportation program for two hundred and eighteen thousand. And our maintenance assessments at four hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-five. To balance the budget for revenue, we would use some undetermined unbalance of two hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred dollars. And that would be for improvements, capital asset improvements as well, the general budget on that. For our expenditure in the general fund. You can see there's many things that we've included, typically a budget of five percent increases for wages, which we have done again this year. Again, that is not set in stone. That's not saying that everyone will get a five percent increase. It just gives you the leeway of giving what you feel fit after reviews are done. Um also included increases for the boards and council mayor of five hundred dollars, fifty dollars for planning our board. I bumped up the number of council members in case there is a petition that comes around and they wanna add another ward. For uh so I increased it to six uh councils instead of four, just to be prepared. Um I included some notebooks for six council and the mayor. Um one of the bigger things we've included was a benefit of including fifty percent of a family plan for insurance. As we continue to grow and we research some of the other cities in the vicinity, there seems to be. Consensus that they do offer some type of a family plan to their insurance, which we at this time do not offer. So we've included that in this budget of for those that are currently on the plan and that we included for new hires. That is included in there. We've. We've given approval to hire that community development director who we included that higher in this budget. Let's see. We've included a new hire finance officer for about three months. Looking at retirement, I'm not sure when or how, I'll be able to do it, but just wanted to have it in there for some training purposes before I actually retire.
I'm not alone.
It's on camera now.
And we all disagree.
Included some asphalt paving at Public Works Facility. That would be the phase three portion of it. And some fencing around there as well, and any office expansion and remodeling that may need to be done due to new hires. The general backup generator for the Public Works Building at thirty-five thousand. Um included a new hire planning office support staff for nine months. This would be for Michael. He's very overwhelmed, I think, the process of all the building permits that he's dealt with this year, and I can see it's holding down in awesome. That was one request that we put in there. Let's see, and course equipment for that new staff. Different engineering plans include traffic analysis, downtown master plan, transportation master plan, the avenue quarter, preliminary design, Harry and Willow Southeast. Preliminary design, wetlands, preliminary plan. Um at least for the engineering, as you know, Joe, the office is um at. A new building of Public Works for two, so for him to have a copier in that building for his use. Um it includes a drone and some surveying equipment. The police contract that was signed earlier for four hundred and ten thousand eight hundred eighty dollars was included in the fireman or fire department contract for seventy-two thousand eight hundred eighty-five. We've also included a new higher building sector and code enforcement, a shared position. Um we currently have both of those gentlemen that are still working for us, and we also included their wages in there as well. Not knowing. How that will all work out, but we have included a desire for that area. We've included money for a new outdoor wiring siren. I think this was for a replacement one.
Perry and Tiger?
At Perry and Tiger. We've been trying to get the old ones upgraded, replaced, and then uh we did cut one out. We had two budgeted. Try to. Did some cuts throughout there with staff, and the other one was for outside of school number seven in that area. And we thought we'd wait until residential starts building up in that area that used. So that was cut.
There's currently not one in the major crossing development right now. I doubt it. Or they'll have H O A orders, so they have the monies to be able to do that, or maybe to do it all, but.
Okay.
Um includes a full-time hire from Public Works. It also includes the new hire that was approved and will be starting next Monday for the wastewater treatment facilities. We'll be up to staff there. Dust control, slurry seal, stripings, um school crosswater painting, hot water repairs, ADA curb ramp improvements. Some of the basics that we do every year, um utility easement purchases. For uh August Avenue Mill and Overlay, that's kind of the big project right there, and that would have been some of that two hundred and fifty-two thousand used for. Balance, the unregulated fund balance. For equipment, there's a dump truck with a snowplow and a pickup. Saw light packer miscellaneous, new tools, warning lights and radios. Uh we paid for both street and storm drainage assessments on city-owned properties, so that's included within the budget. Um part of the energy bill for street lighting is from the general fund, but it's also in the new fund that was passed earlier this year with that two B of the two dollar. Um a month thing, so part that will be paid from general fund and the other part will be paid from those funds that are collected. In the special fund. There's a greater rental for smaller rooms, all ice melt, cutting edges, and we increased those because we have quite a few more streets than we had previously in years. We have some principal interest uh like the street cleaner and the our street sweeper and the saw handler that we purchased this year that will make the payments. On, we have the animal control contract, less now prevention supplies and materials. We have uh included an H V A subsidy at twenty-five thousand. We've also included rental potty potties for parks, mulch, fertilizer and seed, community events that are hosted by the park board as well as a Harrisburg based community event. Some concrete edging in the parks, skate park ramp, a fishing pier, additional park improvements of fifty thousand dollars a gator and a field drag. And then thirty-two thousand five hundred from forestry, and that's kind of a carryover each year for the tree budget. I believe there's a grappling or some piece of equipment that was requested for street. I berate their overall budget increased by three percent. Their total budget is a hundred and two thousand five hundred and seventy-eight. And then we have a sales tax reimbursement contract that we continue to do.
Does that one expire this year?
I don't believe so.
Is it five years? It's only been three.
It's only been three. All right, that was five years.
I can double check for you. Is there any questions on the general fund?
Is there anything that, and I'm just kind of curious from the park standpoint, was there anything that park board wanted that specifically kind of got cut?
The one thing that sticks out to me is the rental of potty potties. For. Central Park, and that was about ten thousand dollars. And after staff talk about, we just bought a brand new jetback truck. At the time used, we had the month cost of the truck that we purchased, that would be something that. Clean out our city-owned ones that we have. Is there anything else?
Tom, what's the escape park about? We have it in our budget for right now, but we have not got all the details in that yet. Joe might have more information than Joe.
All right, I picked up my staff now. Residents have. Yeah, I, my own kids, there's kids on my street that are in the skateboarding. And so I looked online for some cheap uh, you know, temporary or uh economical ramps. And there's some small wooden, small halfpipe mini ramps, uh four or five feet tall, uh wooden, place just about anywhere that's level. And as kind of a pilot project trial, let's see if kids actually use it, we gotta put it in the right place, and I'll identify that.
But they did come up about five years ago for our shit park.
Yeah, and so a lot of times residents don't want that their backyard, so that comes, that proves to be difficult, right? And so um I brought that to park board and say, you know, if this might be a cheap, you know, a lot of people that are really into it, then maybe you expand or maybe you do something more permanent. Uh just as a resident, I thought some kids might like it. I don't know where to put it. I'm going to talk about that, so I brought it. You just wanna do it, don't you? I used to skateboard.
I said, see that going. Yeah, I used to up here.
You did kind of, like, some of the items, like that fifty thousand for park improvement thing, all they're looking at, all in the water conservation grant for mansion funds. Or something like that. We had kind of been pointed the project and then we left it up to the park board, which is fifty thousand. Anything else? I have got additional sales tax fund projections. We use sixty-five thousand for that. The H E D subsidy request, they did request eighty thousand for their request. We did cut that back, just to be more in line with the actual sales tax projection that we received. And I believe Andrew's had a chance to visit the front a little bit, or not yet?
Not that long.
Not yet, not yet.
That was the one that was a forty, right? Is it forty that we did?
Forty, we did this.
That should be less than expected.
Oh, yes, it should be. And then we included another fireworks display. The street lighting fund, we did estimate seventy thousand dollars every two hour on speed. And then what comes in will go back out towards those. Storm water drainage fund, this is our annual assessments for those, we estimate or calculated, we can estimate this, those are calculated right now, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Just some of the items that we wanted to do in this fund, we did need to use some unbalanced, which there is available, of thirty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. There's a preliminary plan, some hallways and blinds, tonne of channel maintenance projects, basic and legendary collection, collection system. We do have a principal interest team for the other project. Water fund. This one sits is rather healthy right now, so um don't be out of line when we say we use some fund balance of four hundred thousand dollars. Um this would mainly be for um some water main installment project and the water meter upgrade. So but projected revenue from water sales and surcharges is eight hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. And with the fees and rentals based on towers. There, so.
Jill, have we seen a lot more usage this year than last year since, what is last year, that people were monitoring more?
Pretty much just that first month when everyone getting new lawns and stuff. We have some studies that need to be done, like to also do a water wastewater rate study, that's about fifty thousand, so twenty-five thousand is in this fund, budgeted for in twenty-five over the sewer. Um again, it includes H S A contributions, family plan contribution. Again, it includes HSA contributions, family plan contributions for group insurance system, wage increases, new certifications, that meter upgrade and annual meters inspections, repairs to water pipes and other equipment cost purchasing or water. We calculated off the amount two hundred and five thousand dollars. Easement acquisitions, that central area twelve inch water main. So upsizing within developments. And then our principal interest home payments on water. And then some of the equipment are divided out into all four departments. They use them in every department. So this dump truck that came in, it's all where their water is. Probably take it up to so far. So it's budgeted there as well as pick up the tools and warning lights and radios. For the sewer, our surcharge with our surcharges and our revenue, let's say, will be two million four hundred and two thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. Let's hook up these rental land and then we have general long-term debt there that will take from our loan. And we'll use some of the undiscputed fund balance. And this is one we were talking about, doing our wastewater treatment facility. That this fund would dip down more than there was a line. We dip down closer to the where we want to be normally for savings. So this next couple, two, three years, we will be dipping down past that line. Includes attorney fees, engineering, what's left for the wastewater treatment facility. The East Sewer Master Plan Engineering Study, a nine mile tropical area plan. And beyond that water wastewater study includes the new hire certifications and increases for employees, group insurance. It also includes some bond council closing fees, televising of lines, lab testing of relining of pipes, which is a large piece, lift station repairs and maintenance pipe repairs. Our payment to Sue Falls for treatment, we struggled with this. We didn't know where to be with that, but we kind of talked it over with. Who was it that suggested that maybe we could take our third cell and leave that be for a while and maybe be able to be pumped out with our discharge permit? So we'll see how things go next year when we get ready to operate water regulation. Because we want to have enough store to fill that on day one we can use it. There is easement acquisitions, the rest of the construction of the water regulation facility, some upsizing full meters, some new tools for the facility along with office equipment down there. And the principal interest loans, and again, that equipment that we talked about earlier. So right now, using what we have, everything was balanced. I put it into the ordinance, but didn't know if we were ready to do the first reading yet tonight. But prepared for the next meeting, for the first reading, I should still get my pass to second reading. September good deed, I think. Meeting on the first. And we have a pass before I told the first to certify. That's a lot of talk. Good thing I gave them a mouse. Question, if you have any between now and the first reading? Let me know. Thank you. Sit down and go through it. We've, I have the process a little bit. I just want to explain that, how we did that this year was Joey prepared, gone through that CIT with the different boards, got those projects prioritized. I sent out request forms for all the departments and even HEDC and HVA those areas. They did not, I don't want to explain, HVA didn't submit a request, but we did. Once I received those back, I flagged it all the numbers that I received. We at that time, we were probably two and a half, three million dollars over budget. And because you really hope you can do everything, want everything. But then staff met and we were able to work through and cut back on some of the things that we could do without or could be moved to a new year, another year, to the next year without. That's how I'm using some of our designated fund balance.
Just thought this disability awareness that ask for anything. They did, but we kept.
They did, but we did include money in there for.
Okay.
I thought I had it on my. Don't drive here and I don't, it seemed like I copied over everything in that file. But I would have been able to tell you how much. But there is some money in there for not advance, but for something.
It is twenty-five hundred dollars for some grants we're looking at giving for some improvements for businesses and homeowners to approve this building.
Tried to capture as much as I could on the little overview sheet there. I thought it was easier to read that than me going through each line and putting on it my little notes on there.
Yes, yeah.
Hope you're okay. Almost presented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shouldn't speak when you're upset or frustrated about something at the moment, but I want to get it out there now while it's still fresh in my mind and while it's still refreshed off the experience. I'm frustrated the way Joe was treated tonight. It could have been any other staff member up here that was constantly being erupted, salted. Everything about this process is supposed, is formality. Formality is the word. Formality is just the introduction of processes, appropriate times to speak and engage with each other. And all of that is supposed to give you the freedom to make smart decisions that aren't being buried down on by a crowd or the passion of the moment, all of which is tampered by formality. And it's not just the mayor's responsibility to, as the residing over the meeting, to help with that formality. It's everybody's job to not engage with the crowd at public comment time or any other time because they're not supposed to be speaking anytime after a public comment, any issue ever. The, you are not supposed to engage with them anytime ever. The staff isn't supposed to engage with them at any time ever. And all of that is just about introduce formality and keep, keeping things respectful. And tonight that got away from us. This is a big problem we've dealt with for a while. But we have to, have to get back to some formality to make sure things stay respectful and to make sure you're able to make decisions without the passion for power.
Great, well, moving to adjourn the city council meeting at seven thirty-nine. So I have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting. There you go, Paul.
Hank?
Hi.
Maxwell?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Bert?
Hi.